Full and. That would be the only like, kind of like tone shift where it's just sort of like, you just like dive into this and then the. Yeah, I just wanted to make that point. You get what I mean?
I get what you mean. And let me, let's get this meeting started. Formally and then, uh, no, I love that comment. We'll make sure. So, uh. Let's say we have a forum now and, uh. Dave, if I could ask you to, to just share this, that would be great. Something agenda, do you want me to put the agenda or do you have it?
I've got it. Um, thanks, August. All right, it's, uh, twelve oh three here, uh, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. This is a. This is the regular meeting of the Grand County. I guess this probably is a special meeting, eh?
Yeah.
Of the Grand County Economic Development Advisory Board. Um, here present today are August Granith, Rob Walker, Kelly Thornton, Caitlin Myers, Ben Alter, Court Wright, Jasmine Duncan. Ben Riley. Um. If anyone has any conflicts of interest, disclosures or ex parte communication disclosed at this time, now's your, now's your chance.
Um, I'm on the board of the land trust.
Thank you, Rob. And then, uh, are there any citizens to be heard present at the meeting today? Okay, CNN will just move on to presentation or discussion in action items. And I'll, I'll hand it over to August and Ben for, um, to dive into those things, starting with review of the fiscal year twenty two rural county grant, part B application. Take it away, guys. Thanks.
Awesome. So by way of introduction, Rob touched on this, but you know, I appreciate everyone's kind of patience and engagement in this. Uh, prioritization and brainstorming exercise went over the past few months. Landed at ADU incentives is the way to go. Pitched it to the powers that be at the county. They felt that, you know, we found the right priority, maybe not the right tool and encouraged us to kind of pursue something in the Royal Crossing universe and then very quickly. Uh, checked back with y'all to make sure that that felt appropriate and got, um, you know, all positive feedback and then proceeded to go for the, the one week. Finals, um, style approach on this one. Uh, and Caitlin has been tremendously useful as well as Ben, um, and then Amy Rowan from CFA. Uh, so I, maybe, maybe in terms of actually what kind of just like zooming out big picture. Want to quickly overview, have Caitlin kind of give us an idea of. What we landed on as the actual thing we're going to go for here and then we can go through the application and, you know, prove to all of us and any questions that there may still be.
Thanks, August. Um, I can, I, my name is Caitlin Myers. I'm the new incoming executive director for the Mob area community land trust. Um, does anyone want a quick overview of a royal crossing or should we just dive into this proposal?
Anyone dive in unless there are any objections?
Dive in Caitlin.
Dive in.
Okay, we're diving in. Okay, um, Ben and August reached out to me last week, um, to pull together this proposal. Um, and we identified that the best use of these funds to be used at a royal crossing would be to apply for some gap financing for. An upcoming low income housing tax credit application that the housing authority is putting together. Um, it's for thirty two units on one of two of the, uh, multifamily. Large apartment designated parcels at a royal crossing. Um, the other one will be an eighty four unit apartment complex that we will start working on later in the year to identify developer, but. Uh, because the housing authority already pulled together a light tech application that they almost submitted last fall. We felt that this would be the most project ready proposal related to a crossing. So. The proposal more specifically is to, for six hundred thousand dollars, which will cover, uh, land acquisition at a royal crossing. Um, so the land trust, the way the model works is the land trust retains ownership over the land. And we acquired four point three million dollars in new market tax credits to put in the infrastructure. Uh, and so the housing authority is paying five hundred and forty three thousand in infrastructure fees to pay back that new market tax credit. That the land trust put in. Um, so that's the majority of where the funding will go. Uh, we are also requesting funds for some pre-development work, environmental studies, surveys, um, some schematic design to help. The housing authority pulled together all the information they need for their white tech application, which they will submit in about April. Um, so that's, that's kind of the, the quick and dirty. I know that this is not, uh, and you as a board are familiar with this, but. Housing is economic development in our community. I know you've been talking about that, um. In the proposals that you've been considering for this grant, but especially at a royal crossing, um, because the units will be de-restricted. Permanently affordable housing, it's going to make a huge difference for business retention. And so that is the angle we are taking. Additionally, the land trust has three neighborhood commercial parcels at a royal crossing that we will be developing in. Uh, later years, uh, that will create some new, uh, business expansion opportunities in Spanish Valley. We are, uh, we created a new road that connects Spanish Valley Drive to one ninety one. We're really close to synergy and, uh. The BLM office and the, um, national parks office, which are some of our largest employers. So. We figured that this is a really good central permanently affordable housing project that will benefit, uh, our businesses by providing. Employee housing, um. More specifically, this, uh, skyline arch apartments proposal. Uh, is going to be because it's light tech, it'll be de-restricted for lower income. So up to. Uh, most of them are going to be forty and fifty percent AMI, but up to sixty percent AMI, which is about thirty three thousand for a family of four. So it will be targeting some of our lowest income workers that are, uh, essential to the tourism industry and are really struggling to find. Safe and healthy housing in our community. So that's, that's it.
Awesome.
Caitlin, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, so just so it's straight in my head, uh, the tax credit application for this hasn't actually been submitted yet, but we would still. Use these funds, um, for that project, even if it isn't approved?
Correct. And I think I'll let Ben talk about that a little bit more. Um. But yes, well, I'll, I'll just let Ben talk about that. Yeah.
And R.
Ben R. Yes.
All right, we're working multiple bands here. Uh, yeah, that's correct, Jasmine. There, we, we know that there's going to be a spring round. Um, so we anticipate, um, you obviously going in for that, um, but. You know, to be honest with you, even if we weren't awarded in the spring, we would apply again in the fall. Um, I think right now there's. A, a lot of tax credits to be given out. So we're feeling really good and we've talked to Claudia and Utah Housing. As much so, we feel like we have a really good application and I think that especially if we were to get these funds, that would bolster that application quite a bit. So. I think we're, I don't want to say shoo-in, but I, you know, we have a good shot at getting tax credits in the spring. Um, but even if for something, if something happened, we could reapply in the fall with these funds as well. And, um. I think Ha Su is. Ready and, and wanting to develop that track, whether it happens in the spring or in the future. So we would, you know, we would be doing the same thing, whether it happens now or, or later this year.
Um, awesome. Thank you so much, everybody, for that context. Um. How much appetite is there for kind of going through the application as written? Uh, so everybody sees what's in there, you know, the, the ultimate outcome here is. The application fires a letter of support from our community economic development board, which is this board. Uh. And so. Obviously we want, you know, the word support on this project and, uh, if we want to go through that kind of sentence by sentence, we can do that. Um, I'll kind of, you know, leave it up to you on that in terms of whatever information you want. On this, uh, but, yeah. Tell me, Dave, Court, uh, Jasmine. Do y'all feel like you have a good enough understanding of how this is going to, like, supported at this point? Or would you like to kind of go through the, through the application?
I, you've got my full support. Honestly, August, you guys have done a great job pivoting last minute and getting this so that we have a solid. Application. So I think I'm very much on board. You got my support. So.
Yeah, I'm just reading through it. I'm, uh. Fully in support of it as well. And I, I guess you, do, do we have a template letter of support for this? Do we need to draft something right now?
Ben, I think you have one or have a draft version of something that?
Yeah, I, I do have a drafted letter. Um, I wasn't jazzed with it. So I was hoping that. You could look at it before this, but I don't know if that was possible with all that's gone on. Um, but we do have a draft letter. Um, if folks are. All in support of this, I would love for our office to just take five minutes after this to just. Review that letter and then we could send it around or do we want to go over it now?
We can look at it. We can look at it, Ben. We won't judge you for what you've done. I'm sure it's great.
Well, I've done all, I've.
For all this, for, uh, for everyone's total transparency, basically on Wednesday of last week, I told Ben. That this is your number one priority, don't do anything else until Wednesday. So he's been the total backbone of this effort. Um, as I've had to kind of tend to artistic entry things, uh, in the last couple days. So. Uh. No increases above the couple of that, but, uh.
I, uh.
I think I'd allow you to share.
Yeah, I, I can, I can share from my screen here. Are we going to go over, um, comments we had on the document you shared at some point? Or is that already, is this now happening?
I think we should do that first.
No, it's different. If there's, if there's specific points of contention, let's, let's scroll over that rather than going through the entire thing. Ben, try to pull it up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add real quick that Rob, you posed a small text suggestion. I added it. There is another comment in there that you have, I think, most comment comments. Um, have been resolved at this point, but we can definitely take a look at it. I'll.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I, I was just talking big picture stuff that I kind of. Yeah, the comments I don't care about. I mean, yeah, you put them in or don't. Um, I guess. Is it, can I talk about some thoughts I have on the letter or concerns?
Cue, cue discussion.
What?
I said cue discussion.
Okay. Um. So August, I think you can probably maybe alleviate these concerns because you know. The kind of committee and how this is all structured and everything. But, um, if I was approaching this from like, uh, trying to ask, say like a donor for money or something. Um, the concerns that I have with this is that, um. Uh, you know, it sounds like we're just trying to save Ha Su some money that they would have spent anyways in a project. Rather than creating something new with funding. Um, so it doesn't seem like, I'm wondering whether it's exciting enough or whether that's a criteria. That they are thinking about. I think a private donor. It seems a little like you're just paying for someone's operating expenses. Um, so like, you know, is this extra money? Is this going to do something that Ha Su couldn't do otherwise? And. Or maybe we should talk about how it accelerates the growth or ensures that it will happen. Um, and again, I think, uh, yeah, and the other comment I was going to make was. I think framing it as, you know, making sure we let them know or, or might be good to let them know that we looked at other things and starting new programs. Um, but this thing was kind of going, already going and there's opportunity to help it and prove it. And that's why we decided to. Recommend this rather than some like exciting new fancy thing that we just designed.
Totally. I think that's great from a narrative standpoint. Um. Ben, have you captured that somewhere so that we can kind of add that in?
Sure. Um, and I'll, I'll also say that. Um, that also could work, um, in the letter as well and or the application. But, yeah, I'm going to take that as a note.
Yeah, maybe talk about how unprecedented a royal crossing is in terms of the size, you know, and how much of an impact it can have. But yeah, just like, is it exciting enough? Um, and, and is, and do you think that they'll? Read it as, is it clear enough that their money or do they care that their money needs to be? Creating something completely new that would never happen because this, I think, you know, this would, so can, does someone want to address that point?
Right. Like, how is this money used as an accelerant or as like an unlocking of something that wouldn't happen otherwise?
Well, yeah, my question would be, is that a criteria? Because it seems to me that it's clearly not in that, like. Ben would, was going to do this, apply for this stuff regardless of whether he gets this and he moved forward with those apartments at Ha Su. Um, so. I mean, if, if they, I just wonder if that's going to hurt our application unless we kind of frame it. As an, something incremental. I don't know if that's a criteria they're looking at or not, or if they're just thinking, we had this money, we want to make stuff happen and. You, you get what I'm getting at, August?
Yeah, totally. And it, and it's.
I.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I'm sorry. I, I, I agree with Rob. I think. That's my first, my first thought is, oh, God, the, the housing authority was going to go ahead with this anyway. Why are we requesting this? And I think. I mean, I'm fully in support. I think it would be good to talk about, it's going to accelerate it. It's going to make it. You know, more stable, whatever kinds of things. And I think some mention in both the application and the letter. Because the people who read the application may not get the letter. And vice versa. So I think some at least small mention in the letter, in addition to putting in the application. Makes sense because. You know, that, why are we asking for funding that we might have been able to get somewhere else? Well, it's because. This is going to make it a lot more possible. It's going to accelerate it. It's going to, you know, it's going to help us get other funding. Those, those kinds of things. I think that's important to put in.
May, maybe we could touch on, you know, Ha Su has a number of other plans to develop at a royal crossing besides this development. So kind of mentioning, you know, they've done a lot. They're obviously limited by their infrastructure of how many people that work there and the funding they can obtain. So, and we, and a royal crossing has all these potential units to be built out. And, um, the faster that gets built out, people need this stuff right now and kind of mentioning the urgency of it.
Totally. I think that's, that's, that's huge. Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll add a little bit of nuance if you want, Rob, just to the fact of the, of the, of the need, I guess. Um, you are right. I mean, if, if, if we don't get this grant, the odds of us finding this money somewhere else down the line are probable. Um, but the fact of the matter is, is that we are going to come out of a light tech application with a gap with a. Six hundred thousand to a million dollar need of money that this would absolutely fulfill. And I'm not saying that we're not going to be able to find that money elsewhere because we go to only Walker. We have other, we certainly have other sources. Um, but when we were approached with this, I mean, certainly this will bolster this project. For our future financing applications by showing that we already have some, some money in the project already. That helps us get that future financing much more readily down the line. So. Um, just wanted to point that out that. Yes, we probably could find this funding somewhere else, somewhere down the line, but also. This is definitely required money that we will need to find at some point and. We would love to find it now.
Yeah, you don't, not cashed, you have in your bank. Yeah.
The other thing I wanted to mention on that is I think initially. We were thinking of the larger eighty four unit project as like, let's support that because it is less. Formed and maybe this money can be more catalytic in terms of getting it off the ground. But then I think the shifting, the, the thinking shifted to, yeah, you know, we probably have a better chance of getting this money for a project. That is already ready to go rather than, hey, well, there's no developer, there's no performer, there is just. You know, a flat and a plan, um, for the larger project and the intention was, you know. Thinking of feasibility of the project is really the motivating factor to shift to this kind of thirty two unit apartment. Uh, but then we did definitely consider that as like, could this be more catalytic? For different elements of the project.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, to be clear, I'm in support of helping, you know, I think that's, it's obviously is a huge potential impact. So I'm in support of it. I just think maybe we could make the tone seem a little more like how this is so needed, um, funding wise, it's unclear where this will come from otherwise. This might delay the projects, just so they can be like, so maybe they can in their mind think. If they give us that money, if they give Ha Su that money and so forth. You know, that will happen and where if they don't, it might not happen or something like that, or.
Right.
Maybe seem a little more like, I don't know if desperate is the right word or kind of. It just kind of read, yeah, it didn't read enough. I don't know. I wanted more like emotion in the whole thing.
Hey, Ben, make him cry.
If other people agree with that or, you know.
No, I think context is huge.
But, but you were also saying, August, that, yeah, I mean, I think like, you know, they don't want us to create some crazy new program like. That is totally unique and exciting, which is typically what like a rich donor would probably prefer.
Right. Yeah, this is a government program. They want something that's surefire. So. Yeah, so, 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 yeah. But, okay, any other kind of general comments? I really appreciate that, Rob. Ben, is there anything that's like standing out in the comments in the document here?
Um, Rob, I, I know we've mentioned. Well, I don't think we've used the word permanently, so that might be a good idea for us. We have mentioned. How the systems, the, the light tech that Ha Su is applying for will make this permanently affordable, but. Um, I think it's probably a good idea to use that word. And so I'm going to add that in here and maybe in a few other instances. Um. Let's see, other than that, um. The budget narrative, w- we're going to clean up a little bit once we have the finalized budget, although Amy and Ben and Caitlin already did take a look at it. Uh, there are, those are the only two comments in the document right now. That last one is kind of for me. Um. I know that folks may have not had as much time as they want to this morning to go over it. So, um, you know. This is, there will still be time. Go ahead, Rob.
Um, do you think it makes sense to, I mean, include like, you know, KZU did an hour special talking about workforce shortage issues. Um, a number, you know, like just to highlight, like in a, bring an append. Do you think they understand how important the workforce shortage stuff is with housing? Because I mean. You could probably easily get a few quotes from businesses like, you know, a lot of businesses have it on their front door that they're closed certain days. You could include the KZU interview that, that was, you know, with, with all the different restaurants talking about it. If we wanted to like hit the point home or.
Yeah, I think, so I, I think that's a good idea. I think part of our approach for gaining letters of support has been to kind of underscore. Um, the, the number of, uh, folks in this community from different backgrounds who see the need. Um, and so we're kind of aiming to hammer that point home with a letter from synergy. And a letter from assuming they say yes, we're still waiting on the final yes from the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, this would be an at court kind of situation there, Ben, as.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Court, um, but, um, uh, I'll go back to that in a second, but, but so Rob, to answer your question.
You're on it.
Um, cool. Um, that, that might be something that we could weave more into the narrative in. The grant application. It's certainly something that we are touching on with our letters of support. Um, and I think. I, I don't know. I, I think that with our, with our discussions with Nan, I think that there is some understanding, uh, at the state level of. Uh, the, the dire issue of workforce and how housing is, um, you know, integral to that. We also did just throw in a line from. The, uh, fiscal year twenty three budget, um, in which, uh, the governor is talking about how housing needs to become. Part of economic development strategy at the state level. Um, so I think that the understanding around that is increasing. But if we think we can make that argument, you know, uh, clearer here, then I definitely think that's not a bad idea.
And then just to clarify, we, if we don't get awarded the whole amount, they can give us part of it too. Is that a thing that happens?
No idea. This will be the first time part B competitive grant will be.
Why don't we have a line in there then? Maybe that says something like, you know, um, you know, I don't know, you could, you could say, uh. Basically that it would still be appreciated.
We'll take less money.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I think it's reasonable. We're asking for like the maximum. I mean, it might be.
I will say the, the program manager specifically encouraged us to ask for the max. Go for your goals.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Signaling the feet in that way early.
These are just, yeah, just suggestions for guys.
I don't know if we want to signal that yet.
But no, good idea. I appreciate the comment, Rob, but I think, I think, uh, on, on that in terms of the advice we received, I think going for the big now. It'd be great. And if they so choose to give us partial funding.
Okay, great. I've got all that. Um. Any, anyone else? Anything, anything more?
I can just respond really quickly before we move on from that last point. Um, when I worked for the county and applied for a similar grant before they remodeled it. Uh, they did, I mean, we didn't say we will take less money, but they just didn't fund certain parts of our application. I think the, the body that's overseeing this process is familiar with that. And if they don't want to fund something, if they only want to fund part of our application, they will, and they will tell us why they're only funding certain parts.
Yeah, I would imagine that's true, especially considering the pot of money versus the, uh, amount of. Potential applicants. We obviously don't know which counties are applying, but if every county applied for the max, there simply would not be even close to enough. Um, so. Thank you, Caitlin.
And, uh, yeah, we, the chamber, I'm pretty sure I'll talk to Lacy and Lonnie and just double check, but we're in support.
Thanks, Court. Right after this, I'll get you that, uh, letter that we've drafted to get your eyes on. Appreciate it.
Okay, do we want to move on to the, the letter of support from this body? Just take a look at that.
Okay. Um.
None of, none of, none of us have seen this, right? So if you want to read it.
I want to what?
You want to just read it?
Sure, I can read it. Okay. Okay. Everyone can still see it, yes. Okay, the governor's. Office of Economic Opportunities Rural County Grant Program offers unprecedented support to rural communities and will result in a tremendous benefit. To the economic future of Grand County. In our county, workforce availability and seasonality of our economy pose many challenges. However, none of these can be effectively addressed without major progress on the issue of affordable housing. The Rural County Grant Part B Competitive Award will empower our community to accelerate the development of the Royal Crossing Affordable Housing Project. Which will serve our region's workers and support the retention of our local businesses. Before I go on, I will add that I drafted this before I talked to, uh, Ben and Caitlin and Amy about. Um, the specific name of the Ha Su project and using that a little more readily. So I will be incorporating that after this. Uh, the, the name is Skyline Arch. Um. So every now and then, when you see a royal crossing developments, probably going to be Skyline Arch or Skyline Arch at a royal crossing, something like that. Okay, supporting the Royal Crossing development is an opportunity to emphasize the governor's vision that housing become, quote, part of our state's economic strategy. As outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget recommendations. Our city and county governments, along with both nonprofit partners and the business community, have recognized housing as integral to our region's economic opportunity strategy. In Grand County, the challenge of traditional housing converted into overnight rentals, coupled with the competition from outside buyers eager to purchase second homes. Complicates an already challenging situation in which housing prices continue to rise. The Royal Crossing development brings together our region's most effective housing partners. The housing authority of southeastern Utah or Ha Su has already developed and manages numerous affordable housing projects in our county. By leveraging the low income housing tax. By leveraging the low-income housing tax credit program, Ha Su is committed to restricting their thirty-two unit development to families making up to sixty percent of the area. Median income. This ensures housing affordability and stability for generations of Grand County residents. The Moab Area Community Land Trust, one of three land trusts in Utah, will provide ground leases to developers, including Ha Su, while holding the land in trust. Since twenty-twelve, the land trust has worked tirelessly to remove barriers to individuals seeking affordable housing in our county. The land trust provision of the forty-one acre oil crossing subdivision will allow developers, including Ha Su, local nonprofit, community rebuilds and. And others to collaborate in creating permanently affordable housing for one thousand Moab residents. By awarding gap financing to Ha Su's thirty-two unit low-income housing tax credit multifamily project at a Royal Crossing. That will become shorter. The Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity will be facilitating countless opportunities for businesses. To develop and expand. Funds from the Rural County Grant Part B Competitive Award will help hundreds of struggling Grand County residents secure housing and meaningfully contribute to our local economy. We urge you to please give this proposal full consideration. Okay.
Awesome, Ben. That's, that's great. The one thing I wanted to add that I noticed in this and the other thing that I didn't fully comprehend about this project is that it's a thousand acres. That's a fifth of the population of our city. A tenth of the population of the entire town. So, you know, this project, like, houses ten percent of the entire county population. It's significant. So, you know, if we can flag that both. I think that would be really good. I also didn't know that I was just remember.
Ben, I especially liked the part where you mentioned kind of like, you know, the, a few paragraphs up about all the people that are involved. You had like a nice way of starting that paragraph. Or was it brings together our region's most effective housing partners. Think that's a good way of, because, yeah, maybe they don't know who the people are and they're like, yeah. Good.
Thank you. Great. Any, anyone else? Anything else?
No, I think that's great. I agree that that, that paragraph is really good, a good way to, to, to emphasize the. Partners.
Ben, I think the, I think the other letter has like forty acres. I think it's forty-one, like you have it here. So maybe the other, to like a finder, I don't know, doesn't matter, but.
Which other letter?
The, 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 the big document, the application. I feel like it said forty.
Yeah, cool. I'll check that.
I think I edited it. Cool. What else you need from us, August?
Well, if we feel comfortable, we could vote on this letter of support. As is within recommended changes. Yeah, the letter of support would signal the support of the application and then. Go, we could go there if you want to do that. I think we're ready to officially, unless there's any, any concerns.
I'd be ready to motion we approve this letter of support for this application.
All right, I would, I would entertain that motion.
I'll second.
And I would third. All right. So it looks like it's a, a motion by Jasmine, a second by Rob to. And approve this letter of support with discussed revisions. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Looks like it passes unanimously.
And I'll reject, I'll, I'll reject any of the other folks who aren't able to make it and see if they want to put their. Proble on it. But I think we have enough. Awesome. Congratulations to us. The other thing I wanted to mention is that currently we have a regularly scheduled EDAB meeting for this Thursday. My thought is that we don't need to do that. We've just had this marathon push to get this out the door. The priority starting in next year is we have two hundred grand from R A that we've decided how to spend X, Y, Z. And that, you know, we need to start getting that money out. But I think that we can come to that in January. So I, I don't think we need to formally do anything. Or maybe, maybe we'd be prudent to kind of formally cancel that meeting. And. And then, you know, we'll, I'll, I'll set up meeting dates for the new year based on that quarterly schedule if we can make temporary changes if needed. So maybe. That's something if we could. If we want to consider that as a motion or something.
So August, so you're telling me that, you know, your, your, your plate is plentiful through the holidays and not holding a meeting this Thursday won't, uh. Won't be holding you up in any way?
No, that, yes, exactly. That actually be allowing me to wrap up some things and get to.
Right. Well, I, I don't think we need to have a motion, but is there other, any other? Comments or objections from board members here with regards to not meeting the Thursday and waiting until January?
I think we're gonna have a lot to do in January and February with the applications, because. So cool that August and the team, it's like an unprecedented program, you know, it's huge. I think so many people in town are gonna be excited to hear about it and we'll have our. Butterheads together to do it, get, get that squared away. So, yeah.
I just want to make sure because it's technically regularly scheduled on the county site that I, maybe I have to do like a notice that it's canceled or something. To the public as where. I just wanted to make sure we're above board there. Any instant kit or death?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I, I would just, yeah, if there's a way to post with, maybe with Tara or something, but. I, I don't, I think we're, we're probably good.
Can I just email out the meeting dates?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And I'll make sure it's updated on the county site because right now we're only at twenty twenty-one. I think that's it.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you both.
Very good work.
Cheers to Ben for quarterbacking this.
Thanks. Well, cheers to Caitlin and, and other Ben for. Being the wind beneath my wings or something of that sort. Team effort. Thank everyone.
It was all Ben.
Ben, are you, are you, are you, are you like, are you, is there any, is there been any change in your, in your job stuff lately that you should know about?
Uh, yeah, today's, today's actually my, my second day as a county staff. Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Grad.
Well, just, just a dropout, but.
Join the ranks of, yeah.
Put it on your resume.
Join the, when the alumni like, like Gabe.
I'm in good company for sure.
And, and Caitlin, yeah.
Thank you all very much. Yeah, it's really exciting to be aboard.
Great to have you helping the county, man. From a resident perspective, mine.
Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn or anything or how do you do that?
It's twelve forty-two. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thanks, you guys. Good work.